All right. Good evening. We're gonna come back. I'm not gonna say into session. We're coming to the end of our break for in the May 16th, 2023 special meeting of the Hastings School Board. We are on item number six of the agenda, determination of finalists for round two interviews. I would like to ask our MSBA representatives to kind of kick off the beginning of deliberations before the board steps to.
Thank you, Chair Hiddin. That was a long afternoon, a lot of information to listen and absorb and evaluate and rate. So we really appreciate all of the time and attention you gave as board members to the three candidates you've interviewed in round one for the position of superintendent. Just a couple of quick thoughts and then I'll review the EMD form for you. Keep in mind that all of the comments, if possible, should remain positive about your interviewees. You are live streaming this and very often they want to watch and see what's said. And so we like you to focus on the strengths of the candidates you'd like to bring back next week versus any weaknesses of those that you're not interested in returning. So just a quick reminder about that. There's one more thing I wanted to remind you about. I will think of it. So what I will discuss about the EMD form is it's not a ranking of candidates. This does not decide one, two, three, who are you going to bring back and who not to bring back. What it does show is the leanings of the board as far as the answers, how they resonated with you as exceeding or perhaps not meeting your expectations. Those are the two numbers we always tell you to look at. The meets and average response is great, but what we want to say is the more exceeds that a candidate had, the better individual board members felt about their responses. The more Ds a candidate had does not meet, the more they're thinking there's some room to grow in those responses. So we purposely don't rank anyone because rankings are public data. This is not a ranking. So it's just something for board eyes only, just to see how you feel about those that you visited with today. Now I remember what I was gonna say. When you get to the deliberations and you have the sheet in front of you, how we typically just circle around for everyone, make one or two thoughts on the strengths of each person. What it boils down to for you tonight is who would you like to talk to again next week? Who do you want to learn more from? Who are you interested in diving deeper with? So I'll turn it over to Chair Hiddin with that unless you have any questions for me on that EMD form. One tool in the toolbox. It is not how you have to make your decision. It's just one indicator. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Chair Hiddin.
Okay. Thank you. And if, as you reflect on this, you pick up or consider more questions that you might have, our MSBA representatives will be standing by, sure to provide us that technical information. What I'd like to do first is we'll spend some time discussing the strengths of each candidate. And we'll give everybody or all board members at the table an opportunity to share one or two strengths that they identified in the candidates. Again, to Ms. Dorn's point, they all brought different skill sets and were all strong candidates in that regard. I think for purposes of just my ordered brain thinking, let's discuss the candidates in the order in which we interviewed. Am I comfortable with that? So what I'd like to do first is ask that each board member shares strengths of Mr. LaShawn Roy, Ray, excuse me, Mr. LaShawn Ray. And I think, oh, well, I think what I'll do is, we only have three candidates. I was gonna rotate and pick on a different person each time to start, but I think I'll still pick on a different person each time to start. And not everybody's gonna get a chance to go first, I guess, as all that breaks down. Given line of sight on our first candidate, I'm gonna ask Director Tate to share first, and then we'll go around the table.
I have down that Mr. Ray has experience with a diverse population of students and also that he is a very results oriented and data driven person.
Let's go. We'll go this way.
I am down, I had, oh, it's probably not. I'm just gonna raise this up a little lower, lower. Got it. Thank you. I've got him down as to the question of the educational programs upgrades and evaluation of the results. I thought he was very strong on that particular one. In addition, I also had him as being very strong in terms of equity leadership.
I as well. Very strength of his is equity leadership and also his work with the MTSS system that we're implementing in our schools.
So what I, okay, there's a lot of great experience that was evident with bridging educational gaps. And then they foster a conducive and welcoming environment for all stakeholders. It wasn't just one focus on a particular area, but what I drew out of it is that it was all stakeholder input was valued.
Thank you. I was really struck by Mr. Ray's strength in discussing engaging families and the entirety of family and parent engagement. I thought he had some very insightful and unique, unique perspective on that and in a way that would really challenge how we engage people that we don't traditionally see in the schools. And I was also struck by his sense of humor, which was a piece that the students had identified as something that was valuable to them. And I felt that can be a really strong bridge building component.
I really perceived him to be a very close listener and I appreciated his attention detail, going back, rereading the questions and his authenticity.
So I really liked the way that he answered a lot of the questions with the community defining the roles in mind. And that's one of the things he said multiple times, that the community would define the roles. I think that's a really collaborative and innovative way to think about a strategic plan, or I just think, I thought that was really great. And I also thought that his addressing problems head on was a, was a great asset.
Having given everybody an opportunity to share one or two things, and I appreciate how well you, one, respected that space so that everybody had something to add. Does anybody have any additional items that they felt were not addressed as a strength for Mr. Ray? All right. Thank you. With that, I'd be interested in going around the table and let's share the strengths of our second candidate, Dr. John Bezek. And I think I will start with Director Bysel.
Developing a safe and inclusive learning environment. I liked how he said for age appropriate for each building and finding out the why. I thought that was a nice strength. And also, talked a lot about pride in the small towns that he's been in, the small town, the feel of Hastings and kind of where he's been from. Telling your story, you like to tell the story of Hastings and tell the story you've come from. I really, I am where I want to be. That's what stood with me.
All right. What really struck me was his energy and excitement about our community and how he and his expertise would fit into that fold. And then one thing that he had mentioned that really, I think, fits within our leadership profile is that responsibility, competence, and ethical decision making leads to trust.
Thank you. A couple of things that stood out to me with regard to Dr. Bezek was when he talked about uniting people who hold different views on public education and spoke to sitting in a listening place and hearing from people and hearing the critiques and then really trying to find that common ground and that common core and recognizing that, that the importance was the place of agreement and consistency and holding to that, but still being able to listen to the challenges and, or the, yeah, the challenges and understanding why people might hold them. I also felt that he brings a really special expertise with regard to developing different pathways, non-traditional, but not college directed pathways and implementing those specifically at a, at a high school level. And I think that having done that at a couple of places, that's a really unique skill set and perspective.
I was struck by, he commented on the importance of culture in the places that he's worked in. And more importantly, he described some of the very specific things that, that he was responsible for in generating and supporting that, that spirit of culture. And I mean, he works in a very large building. So he has a background at managing many staff and many students.
One of the things that stood out to me is when we were talking about safety and accountability. He not only was policy and procedure focused, but also implementation focused, which I think is a really valuable asset for our district.
Right. You all have taken my top six. So thank you for that. So I will go down to seven and eight here. Two things that I, that I liked about him was, he said one of his strengths is a relationship builder, which we know is important, and that he is known to create a positive atmosphere.
Because of the stops he's made, he's, I feel he's quite well rounded in terms of the stops and the different types of school environments he's seen. He's seen multiple school environments that are very different from one another. So he's very well rounded in that respect. He mentioned Hastings in particular in terms of balancing the rich tradition with the growth. So like the idea that he's focused not on just the tradition of who the city has been, but who it can become. So I kind of like the way you approached that. And he also had mentioned that in terms of what do you need to be successful with regard to the kids and meaning where they're at, he said you have to make kids feel welcome so they can survive and thrive. And then he said you have to convince people that you're not taking away from someone to give to another. So I really appreciate that.
Do any school board members have a notable strength that they feel like was not, they weren't able to represent? Director Ma?
I have one. I really appreciated the way that he works with conflict resolution, you know, identifying that, yeah, email is great in some instances, but the way, you know, to be able to have that face to face conversation to resolve a potential conflict. That way you're getting to know the individual, what their, you know, their perspective. Really appreciated that.
I appreciated that when it came to budget and finance, he had experience at a site level and also as an assistant superintendent at a district level and particularly with budget reductions.
I did like the fact that he, you know, when he started talking about the min camp programs that he's had in place and the fact that he's very much about enhancing CIS, doing everything he can to keep the kids within the building, because he felt that that's a space that we can control. He said, that's a space, I know the quality, I know what's going on. Once they get outside the building, it's harder to ensure their educational needs are being met. So doing everything you can to keep them within the building, be it the min camp, CS, whatever happens to be.
Do any other board members have something to add with regard to Mr. Bezek? Dr. Bezek, excuse me. Thank you. With that, let's take the opportunity to share some strengths from our third interview candidate, Dr. Champa. And just because I'm chair and I don't want to go first, I'm gonna break my pattern and I'm gonna ask Director Zuzek to go first. Thank you.
When interviewing for teachers or administrators, there's a body of work around the research that goes into their emotional drive for wanting to be in education. And her story of having a classroom at home as just a little child, seven, eight years old, it just shows that her heart for the entirety of her life has been really around education and the intentionality of that. It shows a depth of, of meaning and a depth of purpose in, in her.
So I'm gonna add to that. Her passion for education is outstanding. One of her statements really stuck with me and it was, "Education is the core of who I am." And I mean, it was one of our first opening statements and it just, I think that's really awesome. Her community engagement, tour of gratitude after was another thing, like those, those specific things, those are things that I hadn't thought about, like after we go out and talk to people in the community about different issues, but going out afterwards, after the issue's been solved or whatever, that we make those connections, remake those connections. I thought that was an awesome, awesome aspect of what she was talking about for our community engagement.
One thing that I really like about her is that she's got some extensive experience as a superintendent. Another thing I really enjoyed is her response to how to build strong relationships with the school board and using that strength, Strengths Finder tool in, as a fantastic tool to do that.
Much like Director Tate earlier, a lot of things have been stolen. But I did like the fact that she has a business manager one day a week, which kind of puts her in that role all the time. So she really understands that business piece and that finance piece, I think, quite a bit, which shows she's got that business acumen to handle that component of it. And I like the fact that she's very upfront in saying, you know what, you know, it's a humble brag, right? I've done so well, I haven't had to ever cut, but I know how to do it. And I'll do it if I have to, you know. So I really appreciated that upfrontness about that in terms of that same thing.
What stood out to me the most is her development of the educational programs in her schools. That was second to none. I was just floored by that. And also, her talking about her strengths and her weaknesses and her knowing that she does too much and she has to slow down, but how passionate she is, like Dr. Dressley said, she's so passionate about education that she does what's best for the students, tries to find what's best for the students, do research, find, find more for what else students need, it's not just a certain group or, she wants what's best for all.
So this isn't a direct quote, but something that, as she was answering the questions, it was, it was very clear to me that she was passionate about empowering staff, which empowers students and the, in the stakeholder, like it was a full, full concept thing, but really it was empowering staff that then leads to empowering students. And then I really liked that, you know, when asked the question about the, you know, correlation between student success and parent engagement, her first comment was, "Parents are a student's first educator." And so that tells me engaging with the community, engaging with, with parents and guardians to ensure that there is transparency, like that, she understands that this is what they bring to the table, table and how she can facilitate their child's or our children's success.
Thank you. The primary word that I took away from the interview with Dr. Champa was trust. She, she integrated that and I felt like she did it in an authentic way, in a way that's representative to her character in response to virtually every question. And you can see that as a guiding principle. I felt like across the board, she had, and this comes from her years of experience in the superintendent's role, but she had specific examples related to budget development and coordination with the board and curriculum engagement and modifications, including things and lessons that she's learned as a, as something that was not a strength at the time. The single piece that stood out to me strongest in her interview was the discussion about short and long term strategic financial and operating plans and then implementation. She had such strong examples of implementation, all the way down to monthly reports at board meetings, which is essentially a representation of our vision cards, which we see on a regular basis, but engaging that into her cabinet's performance and being able to see that on a regular basis. I felt like that was a fully fleshed out, implemented demonstration that really strongly answered that question. Does anybody have any additional items that they felt were not addressed to make sure that we speak to Dr. Champa's strengths, Dr. or Ms. Dressley, Director Dressley?
I will say that I absolutely loved her superintendent trading cards. It was great bits of information and it was, they were awesome.
I do like how she said, "We fail to listen sometimes. Sometimes we think we know or we're too embarrassed that we don't know" and to ask those questions and like really hearing directly and having her family be a little bit diverse and understanding the dynamics of that.
Thank you. I also appreciate that cultural relevancy. So thanks for mentioning that. She mentioned something about, we have to ensure that we're getting away from win lose. Like we've gotten in the subculture, there's either winners or losers. And she goes, it doesn't have to be that way. We need to get away from win lose mentality. And I like that mindset she was taking. And I have to say that I feel for where she is, which is, which is smaller in a sense. I feel like they've done very big, big things. You know, they've, they've managed things that should not happen in communities that small and she's gotten it done.
I was impressed by her answer to creating, how do you build trust? And she read the, the letter that she reads to her staff every year to, I mean, that like complete transparency, like this is who I am as a leader, this is what you can expect from me. I loved it.
Are there any additional points that people would like to make, either with regard to Dr. Champa or upon reflection, either of the other two? to Dr. Champa or upon reflection, either of the other two candidates that we heard from today? I'll give everybody a few minutes to, or not a few minutes, because I don't feel like forever, 30 seconds to look back at your sheets and see. Did anybody come across something that they'd like to add at this time? And if not, oh, Director Davis?
One thing I wanted to mention on Dr. Bezek that I just, as I was going through my notes, was this component about trying to make sure they're meeting, meeting those kids where they're at, the kids that needed extra help and things like that. Sometimes, one of the restrictions could be as simple as transportation and ensuring there was transportation provided at off-normal times to then bus the kids home, like say a late bus and things like that. If they had some other conflict that allowed them from being on the bus at that time, if they needed additional educational help.
Is there anything else at this time? Director Zuzek?
Although these, both of these people are different from each other, I appreciated the same quality of about two of them. And it was the quality of humble strength that I, I gained or felt heard from both Dr. Champa and Dr. Bezek. So, a humble strength or a humble confidence. I know that that sounds oxymoronic.
So, we'll leave the discussion with regard to strengths, but obviously, if in the course of the discussion of who to bring back for second, a second round interview comes up, we can certainly refer back to any points that were missed or we feel need to be reinforced. At this time, I'd like to have each member share individually who you would be interested in hearing more from with regard to coming back for a second interview. What would be a, what would be a common practice, Ms. Torn?
I'll have to say it depends. We've had some board members that see one, they'd like to bring back, others see two, others see three. We've had some board members see five. Just who do you really want to learn more about? It doesn't have to be a particular number.
Okay, so if that, if that clarifies it, if you feel like there's one person you'd like to hear back from or up to three, let's have each person share where they're at. Ms. Dressley?
I would like to see Dr. Tammy Champa come back for a second interview.
We don't have to go in order. We got super, like, we spent three hours going in order, asking interview questions. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rest my eyes and whoever would like to go next can just go next.
I agree with Director Dressley. I'd like to see Dr. Champa come back.
See, we're in order anyway. That's what happens. I agree with Director Dressley. I almost called her Dr. Dressley. See what you're doing, Director Dressley, Director Tate. I'd like to see, I'd like to see Dr. Champa.
I would like to see Dr. Champa and Dr. Bezek back.
I would like to see Dr. Champa come back.
Well, for purposes of going in order, I love myself a good going in order, I gotta say, but I don't want people to feel constrained, although the good point was made that for purposes of this kind of discussion, it keeps us from talking over each other. I'd be interested in asking Dr. Champa and Dr. Bezek to both come back.
I would want to see both Dr. Bezek and Dr. Champa as well. And when we develop our questions, we can think about what it is we want to see about them or hear more about them based on what we heard today.
So, I think, I think there's clarity around asking Dr. Champa to come back. There's consistency across the table. In the event that we chose, in the, would there be opposition to asking Dr. Bezek to come back for a second interview as well? I felt like there was a differentiated response there. Mr. Director Davis?
You know what? I was actually on the fence about that, so I'd have absolutely no opposition to bringing Dr. Bezek back as well.
I would have no opposition to him coming back.
Okay, so I think we have consensus. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we have consensus to ask Dr. Champa and Dr. Bezek back for a second round interviews, which would be held on May 23rd. Is that an item which would, would require a motion, action? Okay. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion and a second.
Second. You can have it.
Okay. I heard Director Dressley's voice, although I saw your hand moving, but I think her, I think her mic got turned on first. So, we have a motion and a second to ask Dr. John Bezek and Dr. Tammy Champa to come back for, to come back for second round interviews on May 23rd. Motion by Director Bysel, second by Director Dressley. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Amy is going to go and contact the candidates and she'll return and let you know if they have accepted your invitation to return next week. In the meantime, thank you, Amy. Becky, is there somewhere she can go or a room she could use to make some phone calls? So, in the meantime, I'm going to distribute a second round interview schedule for next Tuesday and we can finalize what that looks like. And by the time Becky comes back, I want to talk a little bit more about round two tours, because tours are also a possibility here. Yes.
Ms. Torn, are we, can we keep the materials that we've got now or do we just have to go back? Because some of the stuff we might want to reference again for those two specifically.
Great question and yes. I would also encourage you, now that you know who you would like to visit with next week, we'll find out if they'd both like to return, to go back into Ravelus, reread their application materials. Now that you've met them, seen them, heard them, you might learn some more from their application materials and letters of reference. So, I'd encourage you to go back into Ravelus. Please also reread your stakeholder report so that you're reminded what your stakeholders said and put these people in the context of the comments from stakeholders. And as always, look back at those leadership profile criteria that you created as a board. So, all of that could be your homework to do before, before next Wednesday? Wednesday? Whatever the 23rd is, sorry. Tuesday, thank you. And then also, before we, we can adjourn, but before everybody leaves, if I could meet with Director Dressley, Zuzek and Tate about the reference check calls the three of you volunteered to make between round one and round two. We'll talk about that separately before we, we head back to St. Peter, okay?
I will point out that as much as, that we do need to spend some time tonight talking about negotiations parameters, so don't get your hopes too, too high about that adjournment word. We do have a bit of work to do. And we can look at doing a recess if, if that works better for you to have a small group discussion, we could do a recess and then come back to. Okay. Well, we'll see once, once Ms. Johnson returns. Bysel?
Just a question on Tuesday. If it's two candidates, can we just move the time back like 15 or so minutes so that I'm not running in late?
You can do anything you'd like because this is not final yet.
So, can I propose to move it back just a little bit so that I'm not running in late? That seems unprofessional.
Yeah, so if we were to go with the presumption right now of two candidates and we'll keep our fingers crossed that they both agree to come back, I suppose it would be helpful to have Becky in here as well because she has to help coordinate.
Do we need the half an hour break considering we're only doing two candidates?
The main reason for the half hour break is that EMD form tabulation. So, if all of you get your EMD results in, and now that you're comfortable with the form and you're comfortable with your context, you could enter them as you go through the interview or you could enter it immediately after the first interview and immediately after the second interview, and then you don't need the full half hour. We could probably have it done in 15 minutes and back to you that quickly, so.
Ms. Garcia, we were just talking about if there's only two candidates, so we're hopeful that they both choose to return. What would be a, if we could move a start time back a little bit to make it more, make it so that board members could get here, so instead of a 3:55 call, would we want to do something like 4:30? 4:45, interview's at 5:00. I don't know what we want to do.
Well, my, my thought was just that if there's, this is, it was predicated on three, we're rolling about the two, why wouldn't we just start where candidate two begins and go from there?
If, if during the tour, we want them to see schools while they're occupied, it might be important to, and maybe, and if that's not important, I mean, there's still going to be kids hanging out.
I would also just point out that you have asked that students help with this and students have after-school activities and they have homework and they have things like that. So, I would just be concerned about pushing it back too far. That would be my only thing, so.
Okay. All right. So, if we moved to a call the board meeting to order at 4:15, I, could we do the first interview at 4:30? I did feel comfortable with that 15 minutes as opposed to five minutes if it's sit down and get ready.
I don't want, like 4:30 for the first.
No, let's do 4:30 for the first interview, because I do think having the right mindset and then, so if we did a, we called the meeting to order at 4:15 and then... I don't know why I'm changing this, I'm going to get an updated document. I know people. Candidate one would be at 4:30. Candidate two would be at 5:45. And then...
A break at 6:45 and deliberations at 7:00.
Okay. So, here's the pragmatic question about that, and I'm super comfortable with those times, is, will, will you all be able to bring your own snacks? Does anybody feel like they need to have a, a break long enough for a snack in there given the, given that later start time? Okay. So, you know, pack a bag of almonds and raisins or something to have during that 15 minutes.
So, can I confirm what I wrote down? Because this is what Becky and I will rely, okay. So, call school board meeting to order on Tuesday, May 23rd at 4:15 and we can revisit a few things. First interview would occur at 4:30, second interview at 5:45, break at 6:45, deliberations begin at 7:00 PM. Okay. So, I'm going to turn it over to Becky for a moment to talk about tours or do we need to just visit with us after the meeting? Okay. So, one thing that I do want to let you know is that on Tuesday, the 23rd, at 4 o'clock, I'm meeting with another district remotely to present candidate recommendations to them. And Amy has another commitment that night, so Becky will be your timekeeper for the first interview. She'll get me settled in a nearby room at 4 o'clock. I'll do my presentation of candidates. It shouldn't take more than a half hour, but if it does, I'm, I know you're in capable hands with Becky holding up your signs and so on and so forth. And plus, the candidates now know the district, they, they know where they're coming, they'll know it's in this room, correct? Hastings Middle School Media Center. We'll make sure we tell them not to go to that door 22, but to come to a different door. So, they'll be well-informed about what to do, but I will be joining you probably at 4:30 or 5:00, if that's okay with everybody. Okay. Thank you. So, if we're settled on the schedule and Becky now talk about tours and we'll talk to candidates about that, I am going to give you some draft questions for round two. Now that you know how many questions you were able to get answered to your satisfaction, you had 17 in one hour, you'll look at these questions, some of them are more detailed and ask for more examples, so you may not want to have 17. You might want more like 12 or 13, whatever you feel like is comfortable. So, this suggested list includes 23. So, I'm going to ask each of you to read it first and pick the ones that really resonate with you first. And each of you can pick up to 10 of these, just like we did last time, and Chair Hedin will say how many like question one, how many like question two, and we'll see where we land as far as how many questions. But first, I'm going to see if Amy has an update. Congratulations, they both accepted your opportunity to interview next week, so, phew, there's always sort of a...
I have a question. Do we have to choose 10, like, if we are having? Okay. Yep.
So apparently the answer is you can choose less than 10.
Thank you.
I have a question I'd like to propose that we ask that is not on the list as well, so. I, I'll just pass my paper around, if that works, they can read it.
I have a really easy proposal once we're done with this part for the, for the negotiations, I think that everybody will agree with, so just remember that when we go to that part. I said, once we get to the negotiation parts, I have a really simple solution to it, to where I think we'll be able to all get out of here on time.
All right, she doesn't even know it and she's already agreeing, so I'm a little concerned.
What's your motivation?
No, I had an idea too, but I, but it requires Vice Chair Malm to go to the choir concert. I'm teasing, because then if she leaves the room, then that makes that open for a lot of delegation. How are board members feeling? Are we ready to do a tally? They're clearly ready. All right, um, all right, so we're going to go around, please indicate that you voted for a question by raising your hand clearly enough that MSBA folks can see it, all right? Question 1. Question 2. Question 3. Question 4. Question 5. Question 6. Question 7. Question 8. Question 9. And you got question 9. Okay, question 10. Question 11. Question 12. Question 13. Question 14. Question 15. It required a page flip, so there was a little, little lag on that one. Question 16. Question 17. Question 18. Question 19. Question 20. Question 21. Question 22. Question 23. Oh, we didn't have to vote for that one, sorry. Question 24.
So I'm going to take a look first and circle the questions, I had at least five, we'll see how many we have there. So it looks like question 1, question 6, question 12, question 15, question 21, and question 23. Okay, that's six questions, so I'm going to go ahead and also circle the ones that had four votes, we'll see where we land there. So four votes include now question 4, question 8, question 13, question 22, question 24. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10. That brings us to 11 questions for round 2. Would you like to also look at people who had three votes? We had 1, 2, 3, 4, four more had three votes.
What was the recommended number of questions?
For round 2, we usually say 12, 13-ish, depends how deep your questions are. Now, you did only, I think, have two scenario questions selected, so you probably have room for a couple more. Some districts do choose four or five scenario questions, they take a long, long time.
I will say that I think that depending on how the candidates approach question number 1, that can get a little bit longer, and I don't know if anybody else agrees, but I think both these candidates are very adept at going more in-depth on things, and they know they'll be able to do it this time, so I don't know that we need additional questions because I do think they're going to feel the latitude, after having gone through what they went through today, of saying, wow, I've got plenty of time, and they'll start going more in-depth. I don't know that we need more questions, that's just my take.
One thing I would point out is that one of your, if you look at questions 18 and 17, 17 and 18, those are the only two questions in that area in round 2. Do you want to probe deeper in that area, and if so, you probably want to pick either 17 or 18? They each got three votes.
That was actually what I was about to ask, if we could possibly add number 18 as a scenario question.
That's a good observation, I would support adding a question in this category. I'm, I tend not to love scenario questions, but I, I look at 17 and it... Yeah, I don't know what I'm saying. I think 17 would, is more arcs over time as an indicator, and it arcs over time, which I think, to me, speaks a little bit more to the superintendent's role. Anybody else have strong thoughts on that, Director Dresley?
I agree with you, I really, I didn't vote for any of the scenario questions, so I just think that, and I think 17, like you said, it goes over time, so.
I think we can get more detail from 17, just because it's, of how it's worded, it's good, you know, the good and the bad, so I think you can get, just the scenario, it's just, it shows two different sides, but the scenario just shows the one side, so I'd be in support of 17, because then you can kind of show, like you said, over time, but like, the good and the bad, if that makes sense.
Could I, could I propose that we combine the two, and list 17, and then say, if you had to, how would you go about doing such? I'm personally concerned about the approach, and the, how do you, how would you go about doing this task?
I was thinking something along the same lines, because I think that is something that we have dealt with in the past few years, and something that we may have to deal with continued. So it's really hard to say, to propose something, but looking at 17 and that last sentence there, to maybe just add a small piece that incorporates the last three words of the seconds, or of the first sentence in 17. I can, I'll write it.
I was going to say, would everyone be comfortable with Director Malm wordsmithing that to reach what Director Tate suggested and just email it to us? That would be great, because I think there's something good in both of those, and then it wouldn't be a scenario question, it would just be a question about this area.
I do tend to agree with that. The only thing I'm wondering is if we're going to talk about the reducing the, that budget piece, that area, yeah, that area, then we just throw, we don't use an actual specific number, just reduction.
I trust that Director Malm will be able to provide a question to that effect. I suspect you might have it prior to email.
I have it right now.
That's what I meant.
So one, one final check, I just want to make sure, because there were some that had three votes, if I want to see if anyone who voted for those wants to advocate for them, does anyone want to really advocate for question 7? Question 14? That's it? Okay, so if not, these are the questions that I will type out, they are not going to be in this order, we're going to mix them up again, so the questions in the beginning are a little easier to answer, and the tough ones are in the middle to the middle of the end. So I've got question 1, 4, 6, 8, 12, 13, 15, 17 and 18 combined, courtesy of Director Malm, 21, 22, 23, and 24. Is that our list for next week? That's 12 questions.
Is that what everybody understood that we had agreed to? Okay, thank you. We are now going to test Director Dresley's consideration. All right, where are we at?
Since the board cycles go on a 4-3 cycle, I think that it should be somebody from the 4 cycle and somebody from the 3 cycle on this, if we're having a so-called committee, because otherwise, it just isn't fluid, and how would, let's say, just, let's just say, there's, for elections, so somebody on each cycle of the election should be in the superintendent negotiations, so that when it comes through next time, it, somebody's here who knows what, what happened there. And I, and I vote for Merck, to be honest.
And that's a really good point, too, for continuity.
So here's the thing that, that's hard about that, and I appreciate it, and I love that my name's not on the table, is...
Yeah, you're the other one.
Choir concert. The thing that I want to point out is, is MSBA, yes, it makes it public meetings. MSBA has taken the conservative, has a conservative recommendation, then when multiple board members, multiple could be two in this case, meet to work on an issue, it's a public meeting. And I think, given the degree of attention to this, well, one to our board as a whole, but to this particular decision, I think that taking the conservative approach is the right approach. And so, given that, we would need to be posting things, and then, and they would be open to the public. So there's going to be some potential time delays following identification of a final, of a candidate to whom we would like to make an offer. That's just a piece of the component, if we don't identify a single person. That being said, you know, this is why we pulled the negotiations piece, it is not imperative to me that it's a, that that person is the chair, I don't think that that's imperative to me. But I do think that the timeliness piece, and again, I would remind everybody that the decision and the adoption of the contract belongs to the board, and what happened at the May 31st is our currently scheduled time to make that adoption. So if somebody else wants to weigh into the timing piece or whatever, I'd be happy to hear it, Director Tate.
I have a question. So after we've identified the final candidate, are we, that night, can we come up with a proposed contract following the interviews as a board? Or as a committee? I mean, can we have that set for that night as the first?
If you could ask both contestants, contenders, candidates to stay? Because it's a negotiations with the person that you're making the proposal to, it's not, it's not us saying, this is what it's going to be, are you in or you're out? Or am I not tracking what you're saying?
I guess my impression was, tell me if I'm wrong, that we agree who we're going to offer, make the offer to, and then we would decide what the contract terms are that we are offering that person that night. And then, of course, when they come back, so I'm saying that then, then there wouldn't be a time gap between when we've made that decision and when we get it out to them, right? It's like a, it's a one and done thing that night. And then, should they come back, of course, yes, we would have to have... that night. And then should they come back, of course, yes, we would have to have the, allow the three day lag.
So you're saying, you're not saying like come back, like physically come back. You're saying it, so I think my experience with negotiations is that it happens in real time, right? And that you establish a parameter. And then that's not quite what I hear you saying.
And that's, and that's what I may not be understanding. I thought that we would, we would make the offer with the contract terms to the candidate. And then after they have a chance to review it, they would come back to us and say, yes, I agree to this fully, or points A and B I don't agree with, we need to talk about.
Vice Ramon, can you share what your experience maybe was the last time or whatever it is that you feel like you want to weigh in? And I'm sorry, I saw you getting ready to speak.
So I can talk about that. I've sat through a few different iterations of contract negotiations with a few different groups, when it was a committee and then when it wasn't a committee and it was ad hoc. So by statute, it, we can do it. But I do appreciate MSBA's conservative approach to publish it. Now, negotiation strategy, correct me if I'm wrong, is closed session? Or is it open for superintendent? That's crazy.
Feel free to contract your legislator.
Wild. That is wild. Okay. So, shoot. What I'm thinking is that we should have already set those general baseline parameters, right? They're not done. We have a general idea of what they could look like, given our base model of the MSBA contract. And then the comparatives that we have. I do, I love the idea. I'm just trying, right now I'm trying to figure out, how can we make this happen? And I don't, I don't, I don't know if we can, if, if we're going to take the conservative approach.
So this is how we could make it happen. It might be that nobody else at the table agrees with me. Oh, Director Zuzik, I'll let him go because I'm searching for something that has been shared to us.
I was contemplating that, on that very well-done chart that we got from Director Mohn and Director Subert. Most of the conditions of employment are, if we intend to align them with the rest of our administrative team, they're all pretty straightforward and they're plug and play into the MSBA model, model contract. Both of these people will be familiar with that contract. And the biggest question is salary. And on what schedule do they get to the top of that potentially constructed salary? And given their experience, considering either of the candidates, and the answer may be different between them, where do, where would they be brought in to that salary schedule? So I, my, my bigger point is, I don't think that it's, it's not that complex.
It's not so much the complexity of it. I just think, because I agree with you. I don't think it's that complex because it is plug and play. I honestly think that what this board should be able to do is set the parameters for what the total comp ceiling is and pick a person and just get it done rather than, because if we all know what the parameters are, we know it's going to come back somewhere in there. So I'm not overly concerned about that part of it. And I literally don't care. I trust every single person on this board to do this. So I don't care who it is. But I just think that we're going to move the ball faster if we do it that way. Set the parameters tonight, pick an individual once that's done because I don't want to get delayed, ended up being really psyched about the candidate, and we delayed just long enough that some other school district slides in, whatever would happen, and we get beat to the punch. I'm really worried about that.
Oh, you were going to say this, same thing. Okay, sorry. Thank you. I was looking down. So I was, I'm trying to read the small, Director Vice Ramon.
Just want to elaborate on that. I do agree about the school district not coming in. I also agree with the four and three, but I do think it should be simple. So if you recommended Mark, because we're the four, most of us have done it, one of you three should do it. So if you recommend Mark, then I'm, I'm really okay with that happening. And you've been through them. You have the experience of both ends. So.
So I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm not trying to speak off mic. I'm just asking if Director Zuzik would be comfortable taking that position and, and having that responsibility. The answer is yes. He's also said he'd be comfortable doing it with another person and having it be public. I'm not concerned about it being public. The whole thing's been public. Everybody's going to be aware of what we're going to be offered by the time we get done having this conversation. My concern is about timing. And what I envision happening on the 23rd is that we hear, we have the tourists, we hear, hear the answers to our additional questions, we identify a candidate we would like to offer it to. And I was, what I was looking for was the, and I didn't find, I got distracted by opening the chart that had been prepared by our HR director, is that the motion to enter into a contract is dependent upon reaching an agreed-upon contract and a background check. So there's a few outstanding things in that motion and heaven forbid, you know, there could be a problem down that road. I don't anticipate that being true. But you, you make the offer and what the parameter would be looking for is saying, based on the model contract in alignment with our current administrative contract parameters. And, and then we need to think of some language of how we, because I would still feel better, better directing one person. It's fine if that be Director Zuzik. Could we, can we come up with language around the financial component? So we've, we have an assessment of comparative districts, which quite honestly, we've been notably below. But if we were to say something like, so that language around the existing, around the contract parameters, directing Director Zuzik and staying in alignment with administration, and then the financial compensation, not to exceed the mean of comparative districts, but to achieve the, achieve the average by the end of the three-year contract, something like that. So it was like, you could, you could modify the entry point based on which of the candidates?
I would agree with that. I think that's, that's one of the things that Mark had said in the last meeting that actually made me think of, ha, that's.
There are some of the school districts that we have in our comps that don't have years two and three. And so the presumptive rate I would propose to be 2% per year for those districts that don't, in, in developing the mean for year one, year two, year three, there are some schools that don't have a year two or year three salary. So I would propose that we push their, that we push their.
Extend their.
Extend their current salary by 2% each year to, to achieve the mean. That's, that's the way that I would fill that hole in the data.
And I would say that within the criteria, the parameters that we're trying to state here is that that would be, we would leave that open for the purposes of today because we would not exceed the mean. Yes, Director Davis?
I'm just wondering if we take into consideration their current salary at all as we're looking at this.
Well, I think the way we end up taking, and I was trying to get to that, and I was trying to read these small numbers at the same time. It comes into it in that, so there's a, I have a couple of opinions about that. And I'll just say my, like, social issue first is that that's how, that's at least a component of the gender pay gap is basing an offered salary on a previous salary. And women tend to enter the workforce at a lower salary. So that may or may not apply in this situation. I have no idea what the current salary is of our female candidate. But that is, that is a demonstrable component of, of the equity pay gap. And I, and at the same time, if we set a parameter that is not to exceed, then, then that would allow investigation into that pay. And Director Zuzik could use that to inform his decision. But I do believe, to the point that Director Zuzik made at our previous meeting, we should be in a competitive pay place by the end of this three-year contract.
So this is, it's available. It's public data, right? So Dr. Bezek, in 2021, his salary was 152.5, 152.26. And Dr. Champa in 2020, so this one's a couple, you know, it's a few years old, was 152.5. So they are essentially, well, but it's a year apart. It's a year apart, different roles, different areas.
Different roles, different years of service.
That's what I looked up.
Incomparable pay.
That's what was available.
I might, I'm trying not to get back on my soapbox. I'm going to step away, step away from the soapbox. Yeah, that's, that feels comparable. Again, I think it's.
Very different districts.
Yeah, very true. Very different responsibilities. I would still, I think, I feel like we have general agreement, but my question is, can, can we get it articulated into a motion? Director Dresly?
I motion that we, let me think of how to wear this now. I motion that we allow Mark.
Director Zuzik.
Direct, sorry, the Director Zuzik, the latitude to make the decision within the parameters. Yep, to enter into draft negotiations. Do you have it written down already?
No.
Into draft negotiations for the superintendent contract. Following identifying our new superintendent and them accepting the position and the background check coming back. Did I cover that?
And then the other components would be that it would align with our existing administrator contracts and the financial component would not exceed.
The mean.
The mean identified in our comparable districts.
I could write a resolution, but I'd have to go back and watch everything that I just said, be able to pull it all together.
Becky has experienced rewatching motions. Ms. Garcia has experienced rewatching motions.
But I trust.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask for some insight from our Director of HR. That's right. That's an important component of the motion on the table, to achieve average by the third year of the contract.
We need a second.
Second.
Wait a minute, I want to make sure I'm clear.
Motion, we'll, we'll get discussion. So the motion is by Director Dresly, second by Director Mohn. Is there any discussion?
So I just want to make sure I'm clear. So what we are, what we're saying then is that we are not, the year one will not necessarily be at average. It's not going to get there until year three potentially. So it could be sub-average until then. Is that what I'm understanding? As opposed to starting at average and then 2% increases over that?
So I want to be a little careful about the use of median and average. But, but where the conversation came at, and again, I'm looking to, to Director of HR for any insights. But this is coming off of our conversation from last week where Director Zuzik made the point that it would be possible and has been the practice of the district with regard to some administrator contract, that a new person coming into the role might start at a 95% or a percentage of the average or mean. And then throughout the course of their three years, it would, the gap would close. And I know the meaning, the median and the average in this case were difficult to calculate because not every district had numbers to the end of the three-year period. Is, can you speak to the issue of median versus average in the development of this?
So we just included both of them. So you had all the different numbers. The 2% for the districts that did not have salaries is consistent with what we've, with what we've done in other bargaining groups where we didn't have that. So that makes sense. I think you just need to be clear. Do you want it to be the median? The hiring is at the median or around and the average? Those are very specific directives that are easy to follow then.
All right. So let's get clarity about if we're moving towards the median or the average.
I recommend the mean, the, the, the average. The, the mean is the average and I recommend the mean. I recommend the average. It's a different word for the same thing.
It's a different word for the same thing, but yes. I just, I want the terminology.
Thank you. Average, average.
I agree with that.
Okay. So clarifying that motion, I am not going to attempt to say it again because then Ms. Garcia will just have to watch another portion of the meeting over. But we'll be speaking to the average. We'll be speaking to existing components of our administrator contracts. We will begin from the policy, excuse me, the model superintendent contract from MSBA. And Director Zuzik will have the authority of the board to enter into negotiations with the goal being approval of a contract at the May 31st special meeting.
Just wondering, why, why is the recommendation the average? As, as opposed to the median?
The, the median has the potential to skew it based on the size of the district and the ruralness of the district, the, the complexity, if you will, of the job. Whereas the average takes all of them into account. And I think that it, you know, we picked those schools because we thought that they were most like us. I think that the median, the median skews it a bit.
We have a motion in a second on the table. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. I believe that's our last action for tonight. Ms. Dorn?
Running out of battery. I just want to revisit something very briefly that we talked about a month or two ago, which is a background check, optional background check on your finalist, your lone finalist or your last two. So just to clarify, next Tuesday, if you are satisfied with one of the two candidates, you could make a motion that says, I move to extend the offer of an employment contract for the position of Hastings Superintendent to their name, contingent upon the following, that a mutually agreeable employment contract is negotiated and a criminal background check is completed with results acceptable to the school board. That's the motion we recommend you.
That's the motion we recommend you make. My question is, you will do a background check, as a matter of course for any employee of the district, do you want that more in-depth background check which we offer as part of our services, it's $395 through Good Hire, now known as Checker? It verifies educational credentials that are on their resumes, it verifies their work history that's on their resumes. We see districts choose that in a couple of scenarios. One, they're a larger district and they're really just wanting to make sure all their bases are covered, so in case someone says they have a doctorate and they don't, they want to know that before they hire the person. And large districts tend to be more cautious about that. Or if they are a not, a known commodity, so an out-of-state candidate in the final round, very often, people will want to spend that almost $400 on a background check, but it's entirely up to you. And it would be helpful to know tonight whether or not that's something that you'll want us to initiate next Tuesday night, depending upon who you select. So yes or no, or do you want to wait and think about it, and next Tuesday decide whether or not to have a background check on your lone finalist?
Director Davis? I heard Director Vysel say, let's do it.
I know, I, I don't know where everybody else is on this, but for $395, it really keeps us out of what could be a really major problem later, if something turns out, one of those credentials turns out to be false. I think it's worth the money to make sure it's not the case.
I see general consensus around the table. At this time, I would consider a motion and a second to undertake a Checker background check.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Director Vysel, second by Director Dresley. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now, anticipating no further motions for action for tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, and prior to doing that, though, I want to remind those of you who indicated you'd be willing to do some background check calls, to stick around for a few minutes and speak to our MSBA representatives. We have a motion and a second to adjourn.
Solved.
Motion Dresley, second Davis, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion is unanimous, I'm gonna believe that Director Tate intended to adjourn.